Fourteen. Meeting of the Jackson City Council to order, and if you would, we're gonna call on Councilmember Randy Wallace to lead us in an invocation and pledge. If you would, please rise.
That's right. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of leadership you have given to the members of the city council. Help us to recognize the wisdom in others and not rely solely on our own opinions. We ask that you guide us so that decisions we make will be pleasing to you and make Jackson a better place to live. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think you can show the only member absent is Councilman Brooks, if he would note that for us. That was the approval of minutes of November fourth, two thousand fourteen city council meeting. Members have received a copy of those minutes. If there's no correction or additions, we'll let those minutes stand as submitted. Item five is invitation for public comment and to the audience. If there's anyone who wishes to be heard under any item, under new business, if you would let me know at that time, I'll be happy to call on you and let you address the council. We have no proclamations this morning, and before we go to first reading, let me just acknowledge the presence of Chief Julian Weiser. I think his first meeting, council meeting, as the chief. Chief, good to have you here. First readings. Item seven is consideration of ordinance to accept Tennessee Department of Transportation project. You've got a bunch of numbers there. Anita, if you'll make those a bunch of record. Key Short Bypass from I forty to Old Hickory Boulevard. Stan, you want to hit me with that?
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
As a part of standard process, T-DOT asked the legislative body, as projects are moving forward in their process, be accepted by the local legislative body as a project within the municipality. So this is part of that process. You'll see a very simple ordinance that refers to this project, and just to give you information on the project, this is the intersection improvements that are gonna be made to Carriage House and Casey Jones Lane to get rid of that U-turn that we've been living with for all these years. So we'll finally get a full intersection there so someone will be able to make a left out of Casey Jones Lane. So it's a needed project, and this is just the acceptance of the project as a project. So.
Okay, so it's kind of SOP, standard operating procedure.
It is.
It may indicate at this point that we've written the Commissioner of Transportation indicating that if any of his projects came in under budget, to certainly consider that project as soon as possible through the failure of Congress to act upon the Highway Trust Fund. Obviously, the state is limited in what it can do, but we had a number of projects scheduled for inside the Jackson corporate city limits, and the continuation of those projects still moving. They have not been canceled. They have simply been postponed until Congress, in its infinite wisdom, will do something about the Highway Trust Fund. But we have indicated by letter to the Commissioner that we would appreciate any consideration of this particular project in case any funding becomes available, or if any of the bids on the other statewide projects come in under bid. So that's where we are. Is there a motion to?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. This is the first reading on an ordinance which will forward onto the state, and we'll have a substantive public hearing. Let me open the public hearing. If there's anyone present who wishes to be heard in opposition and support of the passage of this ordinance, please let it be known. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item two is consideration of ordinance to rezone property located on the west side of US Highway forty-five bypass, just south of Airways Boulevard, from AOFH, Agriculture Open Land Flood Hazard District, to B five FH Highway Business Flood Hazard District, containing four point five acres, more or less submitted by Lyle Brothers.
I apologize for the image. It looks better on your screen than it does up there. It's kind of reflecting off of that background. But this property is located just south of Lyle Brothers' existing facility there at the corner of Airways and the bypass. This is part of the property that they also own, and they're just wanting to consolidate their property under one zoning class. The rest of the property on the corner is already zoned commercial, and this just puts all their property under the same classification. So this was presented to the planning commission, and they have recommended approval of it to you.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Pollak.
Yes, sir.
Is there any immediate plans for that?
No, sir. They have no immediate plans.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. This is ordinance on first reading, so we'll have the public hearing. We'll declare the public hearing open. See if there's anyone present who wishes to be heard in support of and opposition to the passage of this ordinance. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item three is consideration of ordinance to barricade and close Cedar Street to through traffic submitted by Aspall Recovery Center.
Again, I'm trying to make this where you can see it on the screen, but this is the last section. If you're going south on Cedar, this would be your last section of this street. It's the section that runs between Talbot on the north and McCowat on the south. Aspall Manor's facility, they have basically bought all the property on both sides of this street. They own every piece of property except for one. It's owned by another individual, but they are in favor of this. And they are also, you know, at some point in the future, I'm sure this will become a part of their, you know, their property too. All we're doing is barricading on one side, which is on the Talbot side, to stop the flow of through traffic through their property that they own. You know, it just kind of limits the access and allows them to control, you know, who goes across the property and who enters into their facility. So they are asking for this. We presented this to the planning commission, and we are recommending approval of it to you.
What kind of barricades you gonna use, then?
You know, that will be up to, you know, up to them. You know, it could be, you know, something in the nature of a bollard, or it could be, you know, just a standard barricade.
So that wasn't discussed in plan?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I understand what they're trying to do, but let me simply say that I'm not an advocate of it with respect to first responders getting in there in a timely manner. With respect to it being so close to downtown, and we want to broaden downtown, I am just not an advocate of it at all.
Okay, they've acquired all the properties that street closure affects other than one?
Yes, they wanted to, you know, their first request was to abandon the street completely and consolidate it into their property, and that's their future plans. At some point when they acquire that last lot, they would like to basically abandon the street completely and incorporate that in their property because they'll own everything on both sides. But they could not do that now because of the other lot that's still served by Cedar Street. So what they're doing is still providing access to that lot through the McCowat side, and then they're just basically blocking the northern side.
Okay, alright.
So they're still open. It'll still be a city street, still open. It's not being abandoned. It just basically stops through traffic on the north side.
Move to approve. And when you try to get to Highland, do our downtown areas blocked off too? Is that correct?
No, they would still have access through McCowat to Highland.
Okay.
Do our fire chief and our new police chief, do they feel there'd be a problem?
I haven't heard any concerns from police or fire. As a part of our process, we send that to them for comment.
Okay, so they are aware.
Yeah, that's part of our process.
Okay, I think we have a motion and a second. This is an ordinance on first reading again, so we'll conduct the public hearing. We'll declare the public hearing open. If there's anyone here who'd like to speak in support of and opposition to the passage of this ordinance, if you would be recognized at this time. Yes, come on up, Richard.
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
My name is Richard Barber. I'm fortunate enough to be the director of Aspall Recovery Center. We have, over the years, acquired the property on both sides of that Cedar Street section there. We have housing on both sides of it. Mr. Bowen owns the one property that we don't own. I met with him when we started this process. He was highly in favor of it. He had had some burglaries on his property in his home. Once we started acquiring the property, we put privacy fencing around both sides of the block, helped secure his area. He's highly in favor of it. We have traffic crossing Cedar Street from our housing over to our main campus, and our position is that if we could barricade that, that would stop some of that drive-through traffic. We have had conversations with Mr. Bowen's family about acquiring his property. He's an elderly man. It's his home, and we haven't tried to buy it. But we've had conversations with the family, where we feel like, you know, in the coming years, we would be able to buy the property. But again, the whole reason we asked to do that is to cut that traffic, that drive-through traffic down, make it a little safer for our residents there. I'd be happy to address any questions to it.
Any questions, Ms. Barber?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Ms. Barber, I'll ask you the same thing I asked Mr. Pollak. Is the type of barricade, have you all discussed that as far as?
We have discussed it with our board, and what we have talked about, the cones that are... Remember when we closed off some of the property around Lander, put the barricaded cones up? It's kind of obvious.
Those are the bollards, aren't they, Stan?
Yeah, the bollards that we used at the end of the street.
Yeah, okay, okay. Any other questions, Richard, while you're saying? Okay, thank you very much.
Which, as you know, the bollards, if it was an emergency situation and we did need to access from that, from the Talbot side, bollards can be unscrewed and taken out, so it allows you to not permanently close the street. You would have access if you needed it in an emergency situation.
Mr. Pollak, I understand what you're saying with respect to moving them, but I heard that before, last year.
Okay, anyone else here like to be heard on this passage of this ordinance, first reading? If not, I'll close the public hearing. I think we have a motion and a second and discussion on ordinance on first reading. If not, counsel, please vote.
And the motion passes with six members in favor, one voting no, and one abstaining.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Stan. Item eight, on second reading, consideration of ordinance to annex north of the zone and annexation area referred to as Brown Simmons, located on the west side of US Highway forty-five bypass south, just south of Watlington Road, comprising two point seven acres, more or less, proposed zoning for the areas B five Highway Business District. This is ordinance on second reading. Counsel approved it on first reading.
Move the adoption of ordinance, second.
A motion and a second. Discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item nine, under new business, is consideration of contract for engineering design and right-of-way construction and engineering inspection for the Highland Avenue multi-modal project. Slide.
Proposals were received from seven companies on this project, and it is recommended that we award this to A two H, who has a local presence here.
Any questions, counsel? Yes, Mayor. How come we don't have any other cost on here except the one?
This was a proposal, and whenever there is a proposal, we don't have to go, and it's also a professional service. And we don't, we rank these, and based on...
Why shouldn't we be given that information?
What, the ranking?
Yeah, how much each one of them bid.
Because we didn't ask each one of them.
Huntback.
We didn't ask each one of them. We ranked them, and then we choose the one that is the best, we think, for the project, and then we ask them for the cost.
I'm out in left field on this. I've been sitting on this account for a long time, and I'm totally out in left field.
Well, this is how we've done this for years and years.
You mean, normally we have the bids on there.
Right, but this is a proposal, and with a proposal, you can negotiate with the companies, and this is not based on the fee alone. It's based on their knowledge of the job and other factors that Keith...
Is this the company that's doing that roundabout?
Pardon me?
Is this the company that's doing that roundabout?
Keith, would you like to answer that?
No, sir, Councilman. This is a different firm. Grisham Smith and Partners is the firm doing the roundabout design.
Where is this company from?
They have a Jackson office here, in Jackson, downtown, actually, on Liberty Street.
Okay.
And as Susan said, this is a, it's a professional service proposal. It follows the state consultant selection process, and we're actually not allowed to get cost proposals from each person that submits, only the one that is shortlisted. It's not a traditional bid for a purchase of a thing. It's a...
Well, no, it's against the law.
It's a...
It's professional services, and Susan, would you give the council or Councilman Cisco some of the examples of professional services, please?
Professional services, as defined by Tennessee Code Annotated, are companies with high integrity and a lot, and a great deal of knowledge toward that subject. That could be your physicians, attorneys, architects, and engineers. Those are the type people who are grouped into that category. Also, accounting firms are grouped into that. And by law, we're not able to ask them for prices when we send out proposals or bids. Where did, how was this list generated? This list? How was it generated? All of these people, according to Keith's information that went out, in order for them to submit a proposal on this project, they have to be pre-approved by T-DOT. And all of these people are, so they submitted a proposal on this project. And those are the only ones? There are others, I'm sure, that could bid that are on the T-DOT list, but these are the only ones who submitted a proposal. Okay.
Mr. Cobb, you want to add anything to the dialogue as far as professional services and being bid or proposals or? Well, I'm just trying to complete this project. That's why you don't submit bids.
I said, why am I voting in before they made a decision?
Now, we're recommending a company to you.
We have to sign a contract with them. Counsel approves all contracts.
Why is this the one you're choosing? Keith, would you like to, what went into that decision that you filed?
When we, like I said, we follow the state consultant selection process. It's a published process through T-DOT. We published a request, and they had a criteria of things that we would be looking for. One of those things was local knowledge of the project, and we had these seven proposals submitted. That's why there's only seven on this list, because once we sent that request, we published that, only seven were interested enough to submit a proposal. So of those that we received, then we did take that criteria and looked at each proposal. We ranked those, scored those based on that criteria. The, being that we put a heavy emphasis on local knowledge of the project, the four local firms that have a local presence in Jackson were the highest-ranked firms, obviously. Additional review was done on active projects because one of the other criteria that we published was active workload. The three of the local consultants already have active projects with us, ongoing. A two H had just completed a project for the James Buchanan Bridge, and they didn't have an active project. So the workload criteria, they scored higher because they had not active projects with us.
So the other three have an existing contract, which this council has approved previously, and it's active, and they're still being paid for their work, right?
Exactly, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other, go ahead.
I understand what Councilman Cisco is saying, but this is a summary of a proposal, and you ranked with the panels, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I don't think the board, the council, fully understands how you went through the procedures. Is that right, Mr. Chairman? I understand the procedure, but I don't think the council understands the procedures that you've done this end. They usually see proposals on bidding.
Yes, sir.
This is done by committees, is that correct?
Yes, sir, they're, yes, sir.
This needs to be explained.
That's correct. It's not a, that selection process requires you to have a committee to score and rank based off of the proposals, and then the additional review that we did afterward to make a selection recommendation to you, and you're seeing it because of the council has to approve the contract, as the mayor had stated. Because it is a professional service contract in the amount that they've listed that they could do this service for. But there is that technical review of each proposal that's scored and ranked.
And when you're used to seeing all the amounts next to the names of all the companies, those are bids. And that's an entirely different process than the proposals, a request for a proposal. And you said they have a presence in Jackson.
They have a local office, yes.
Where's their main office? It's in Lakeland. Where? Lakeland. Is this the same criteria that you use each time?
Yes.
Use the same criteria?
Every project that we use federal or state money on, we're required to follow the state consultant selection process, yes.
One last question. We only allowed to get the bid from the final one that we awarded the proposal to?
Yes.
That's not specifically because of professional service, though. That's more because it's a state contract that the state requires us to do? Because I know with, our auditing firm is a professional service, but we do get bids from several firms. We take that into consideration when we...
The state selection process outlines this criteria, that you do only see the cost.
Once we pick them, then we get the price, and then we look at the price and make a determination whether it's reasonable or not. If it's not reasonable, then we don't award it.
That's right.
And we come back to somebody else.
That's exactly right, and that's outlined actually in the selection process, exactly as you said it.
Kind of with Councilman Cisco, I'm not too crazy about that process. It looks like we shortlisted two or three, get bids from the two or three. But I guess the state's paying for the majority of this, ninety percent of it, eighty percent?
Eighty.
Okay.
Well, I take that back, ninety-five percent of this project.
Okay, so I guess they can push this around a little bit since they're paying for it.
Any other questions? Okay, we have the recommendation for that contract. Is there a motion for approval? Okay, here are no motion. Contract is...
I'm sorry, Mayor. I thought we had a motion on the table already.
Don't think so.
No.
But I'll make a motion we approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, motion to ask for a second, so no contract for the project. Item two is a consideration of contract for pest control for all city-owned buildings.
We took the Lewis and Best bid on this one, which is Tennessee Valley Termite. They are a local business. They're located on Campbell Street.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Show move.
Second.
No motion, no second. Discussion, counsel. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item three is consideration, thank you, Ms. White, consideration of proposed four hundred dollar year-end bonus for all eligible full-time and part-time city employees. And let me ask Al if you would come up, and maybe Karen, if you would. What does that say? It's six hundred, I'm sorry. That was modified at the agenda review. Consideration proposed six hundred year-end bonus for, six hundred all year-end bonus.
Six and four, or six?
Six. Six, sorry. What do you want to do, add them together?
Hold on.
The numbers being thrown around, and we did discuss at the pre-agenda meeting that the mayor and his staff decided to propose a six hundred dollar, it's called a pay supplement, not really a bonus. And the factors that were involved in is we have not been able to give a cost of living increase since July of two thousand and thirteen, I believe. Isn't that right? And we decided our employees were deserving. That was the first consideration. The second consideration is, obviously, our fiscal responsibilities and our capability of funding this. And we basically, in working with FEMA, I know it's a day-to-day prolonged situation, as Karen and Sam can tell you. But we're basically looking at two projects, one going back to April nineteenth and twentieth of two thousand and eleven, that we're very close to getting the supplement signed. The original contract has been signed. And then the March third and fifth of two thousand and fourteen project, and both of these were debris removal type of situations. We're very close to getting that signed and audited. So there's a good chance we'll have those funds, which would be close to covering the cost of this proposed six hundred dollar bonus. We're still changing some of the numbers, I believe, as far as the part timers and... But initially, Karen, I think your numbers showed we were looking at roughly five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in total. Five hundred and thirty-six of that would be from the general fund, thirty-one thousand from H and S, and seven thousand from the sports place. So we do feel we'll come close to covering the cost of this pay supplement.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Mr. LaFoom, you know, during the budget time, you always get on me about our fund balance.
Do I get on you?
I like to call it cash reserve, but everything is going well with that, and I think that the city employees have done an excellent job. They're deserving of it, and I move that we approve the six hundred dollars.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and discussion from counsel.
It sure would be good to be able to have something to do for these people working hard, and we appreciate it, and... Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other comments from counsel?
Mayor, on the full-time and the part-time we're including, is there a limit to part-time? How much they work before they get the budget, or is that anybody that works part-time?
Regular part-time employees who have been on the payroll since the beginning of the calendar year. Who have gotten regular paychecks.
So regular part-time, you're saying we're not including the seasonal part-time employees?
Not like concession workers at the sports place or gatekeepers.
Was there any rationale for giving the part-time the same amount as the full-time as opposed to half or something? Or just kind of we just want to...
I think it's precedent that we've followed in the past, if you really want to get down to it.
Well, I'm all for them getting a bonus. It is a little disconcerting thinking that if you work forty hours a week, you get six hundred dollars. If you work ten hours a week, you get six hundred, but I know they're each individuals, and they have their families, regardless of the amount of time they put in, and I think that what we're doing here is trying to help our dedicated people have a Merry Christmas, so... But that is a little disconcerting. Never heard of a bonus where everybody got the same regardless of the amount of work, but it's a charitable thing to do, so I'm certain for it.
I mean, most live, part-time people work year-round. They work at least thirty hours or more, don't they?
Yes, sir. We've got several that work.
Because they've been working several years.
And they've gotten substantial checks since January one of two thousand and fourteen. Substantial, I mean, more than forty hours on a week.
Right. Right.
Because I mean, in the future, I think we should look at, at least giving them, you know, they're part-time, full-time, look at them getting some type of benefits would be beneficial for them also.
I think most of our part-time workers work well more than part-time hours.
We have several that work forty hours a week, and sometimes over, sometimes we have overtime for part-time employees.
And projections for the budget, upcoming budget, we can look at a COLA.
You're talking about the next-
Yes, sir.
-fiscal year budget of twenty sixteen, we will be looking, I know the mayor will have us look to see what we can do. Yes, sir.
Karen, would, would you mind giving us your final figure, I know we added in forty-some-odd retirees that were-
Yes, sir, the retirees that we added in is twenty-four thousand dollars, prior to that, the total for all three funds was five hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-six cents, so that'll bring it up to five ninety-four with retirees.
I'm, I'm confused, why are we doing retirees?
Those that are under the old city pension plan, I believe Mr. LaFoome said that they are to be included, and right now we have forty retirees in survivorships that are under that old city pension plan, this is not under the TCRS plan, this is prior to that.
And again, Charles, we've done this each time, the last time being July of two thousand and thirteen, when we get a cost of living increase, and the number of employees on the old city pension obviously is decreasing as people pass on.
Yeah, I can, I can understand the cost of living, but the, the year-end bonus or whatever is kind of awarding our employees for working so hard, and retirees aren't working hard, they work for.
But they did work hard in the past, just the-
Okay.
I think, I think the difference in, in the old plan, the new plan, obviously through TCRS, you have cost of living raises as, as that board determines, with the old plan, there's no, no increases whatsoever, and the, and the benefits deal plan is very, very restrictive. Some of them just did not elect to go, is that right?
That's correct.
Like not to go with TCRS when it was adopted by then the Jackson City Commission. Okay, any other questions, council? Okay, we're talking about a six hundred-
I want to make sure that we're all understanding here, this is not going to include the city council.
You know, we voted, we voted ours down.
Nor does it include the mayor, it does not include any elected officials, except those that receive the COLA, which would be the judge.
Okay, now that we've clarified that.
Well, we'll try to have a Merry Christmas anybody.
Okay, any other, any other, any other questions? We have a motion, I think, and we have a second, I think, any other discussion from council? Talking about a six hundred dollar pay supplement for city employees as described by Director Personnel. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Mayor, before, before we adjourn, could I ask Keith one more question on?
Sure, sure, we have some board appointments, go ahead and ask.
Keith, does, does this mean that this project just won't be done? Are we going to look at it again, or, I hate for the sidewalks.
Unless somebody from council wants to design the project, it won't be done.
I'll, I'll have to do a little bit of research on that, as of right now, we had, council has not enacted a, a contract for the project, so we cannot move forward with the project. I'm not sure what next steps will be.
Can we bring that back before the council at the next meeting? I mean, the state's paying for this.
You can reconsider at any time, that's my understanding.
The grant was for a million, million dollars, roughly.
Yes, just shy, yes, nine hundred, ninety-five thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars, yes.
And that is-
It was to install the, a sidewalk from Parkway to Skyline on Highland, on the west side of Highland, that was the whole project.
You all, you all want a committee of council members to meet with the committee?
Absolutely, we'd be, we'd be happy to.
Okay, I'll take, I'll take nominations for members of that committee, from council members only. Anyone, anyone?
I nominate Cisco, I second Cisco's nomination.
Okay, you're, you're nominating Councilman Cisco for one member, we're asking for a three-member committee to meet with the three-member committees of staff-
Four.
Who makes these, or four?
Yes, sir, it was four.
Making a total of seven, right now we have the name of David Cisco.
It's the, yeah, I think so.
Okay, it's in, it's in that, it's in Councilman Bray, Councilman Conger's district. If there's no objection from council, can we add those two to that committee? We have, we have Councilman Cisco, Councilman Bray, Councilman Conger, to act as a committee working with our staff committee and bring a recommendation back to council at the next meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? Motion, second, discussion, council please vote.
And that motion passes with, well, I'm sorry, that motion failed. No, it, it's four to four.
Okay, it dies, y'all want to try again?
Four to four, isn't it? I count a four.
Now, what is it?
Now we have five and three abstaining.
Okay, motion approved, okay. These, if you will be in contact with members of council when you all meet, come up. Item four is board appointments, health, education, housing facilities, reappointment of Larry Jones and Joyce Corley. Have a motion, have a motion.
Second.
A second, discussion, council please vote.
And, and the, I didn't get a vote on that.
Revote, Mayor, I don't think we, she got the vote.
Okay, let's council that vote out, everybody.
The vote is passes with seven members and one not present.
Okay, Jackson Downtown Revenue Finance, commission, reappointments of Kathy Leatherwood, Susan Cook and Bill Buckley.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, discussion, council please vote.
Motion passes.
And consideration of invoices over ten thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, discussion, council please vote.
Motion passes.
There being no further business, meeting is adjourned.